Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here to the Commission meeting of December 19th, 2023. I called this meeting to order. And one note for the record, a quorum of the members present. Our condolences this morning are with Commissioner Karski and his family as he's out of town attending a family funeral. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cell phones. And if you plan to speak in public comment, if you would just go ahead and sign it in our sign in on the corner, and that way you won't have to say your address out loud. With that, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I would consider a motion to amend the agenda by removing Agenda Item Number Seven.
So moved.
Second? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Then I'd consider a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Is there anyone here today from the public who'd like to comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Is there any request from by the Commission to remove items from the consent agenda? Okay. In that case, I'd take a entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Thunder?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. That takes us to regular business. First item, Item Seven is Consider a Motion to Approve and Authorize the Chair to Sign Amendments to the Accessible Housing Advisory Board Joint Powers. Oh, that's the one that got moved, sorry. Takes us to Item Eight. Consider a Motion to Approve Terminating the South Dakota Cares Agreement between Minnehaha County Human Services and South Dakota Housing Development Authority. Lori Montes, good morning.
Good morning, Lori Montes, Human Services Assistant Director. Here this morning to talk to you about South Dakota Cares and Human Services participation in that, along with our request to withdraw from partnering in helping to disperse those funds. So in the memo, you can see we started in November of 2021, helping people mostly with rents and utilities through those federal funds that were funneled through the South Dakota Housing Development Association. During that time, we have helped with about $5.6 million of those funds. And at this time, we're asking to withdraw from assisting utilizing those funds primarily because the requests have gotten fewer. And there are other partners, there are, I believe, 10 other partners that are continuing to help with those funds, some of whom have hired people specifically to help manage those funds. And so as people have gotten assistance through that program, there's a maximum amount that you can utilize as far as months of assistance, and that is 18 months. And a lot of people have now reached that. That program has been in effect since basically 2020, when COVID funds were first distributed to states from the federal government. So at this time, we're hoping to give our 30-day notice. That's what's required in our agreement. And then we'll withdraw. We'll obviously continue then to provide the services for another 30 days. And at that time, would resume just assisting primarily with county funds for rent and deposit and other emergency relief items as needed.
All right. Are there questions? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. I know that this has been a program that has helped a lot of people, and you guys have worked very hard in administering these funds for the states. So we appreciate that hard work. If there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Thunder?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. That takes us to Item Nine, which is authorize the state's attorney to fulfill one FTE Deputy State's Attorney position funded by the ICJR grant. State's Attorney Hager, good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good.
Thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate it. The Commission may recall back in April, I talked about this grant process. The Commission had given me authority to work with the Attorney General's Office to try and seek some of this funding. The good news is that the award where the federal government said, hey, this is a good idea. And so they granted us some of the money that we'd requested. It took a little bit of tweaking of our proposal. And Amy Folsom from my office and Ladonna from the Attorney General's Office did a lot of good work to make sure that this would continue to be something that we could use to really move forward and kind of attack some of that intimate partner violence, but also in a way that would make financial sense for the county. The whole purpose, or not the whole purpose, one of the things that I really wanted to make sure was that this would not cost the county money. You know, as we are approaching budget time, wanted to try and make sure that we didn't have entities such as the Sheriff's Office that were moving backwards on funding that they had. Our reworked proposal allows for the Sheriff's Office detective to continue to receive some of that salary reimbursement. Sheriff's Office is a good partner, so happy for that to remain in place. The $375,000 that we were awarded over three years with that detective in the Sheriff's Office did not leave us with the full cost of an attorney, which is the piece that we really needed to make this proposal successful. The Attorney General's Office and Attorney General Jackley stepped in and said, hey, we want to see this move forward. And so he's willing to cover the remaining cost of that prosecutor for that three-year period. So I'm certainly grateful to him, appreciate that he sees the value in this type of a prosecutor targeting that domestic violence, that intimate partner violence. So would certainly appreciate the Commission's support and hope to be able to find a prosecutor to fill this position.
All right. Any questions? I would note that I did have an opportunity to visit with the sheriff. He's very appreciative of the work that the state's attorney has done on this and being willing to continue to share these funds with the Sheriff's Office to fund that partial sheriff's position, which is dedicated towards investigating these sorts of crimes. I mean, sadly, very sadly, this is an area where we're seeing increase in crime in our community. So with that, is there any public comment on this item today? All right. Turn it over to the Commission for questions or a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the State's Attorney Deputy State's Attorney position.
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That takes us to Item 10, which is Consider a Motion to Approve the renewal, excuse me, the renewal or issuance of service ambulance licenses in Minnehaha County for 24 to 25. Jason, good morning.
Morning. Jason Guerman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. Earlier this year, we extended the license so we could adjust the maps or the areas that the ambulances serve. And we've done that. And now we're here to approve these licenses. So here to consider a motion to approve the license renewals for the six ambulance services listed below.
Questions for Jason? Any public comment on this item today? All right. Turn it over to Commission for discussion. I know we've had some opportunity to look at this map already and approve it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kiple?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Thunder?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to Item 11, which is authorize the Chair to sign an amendment for the 2024 daily bed rate to the Lincoln County prisoner housing contract. Ward Mattson, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Mattson from the jail. Before you today is an amendment to the existing Lincoln County housing contract that we have. The sole change in the amendment is the price increase from $106.15 to $112 per inmate per day.
Can you explain a little bit to how you get to that annual bed rate?
So.
Or daily bed rate, sorry.
The bed rate is calculated, I have Susan from the Auditor's Office help me. Without her, it'd be very, very difficult for me to get through the math. But it's a it's a huge formula, multiple spreadsheets, and it's based off of federal calculation. So we we plug in all the numbers and then we get to where we're at for our bed rate.
So it's is it our actual cost, or are we making a lot of money off of Lincoln County on this contract?
No, we're just covering costs.
Okay, yeah. So that federal rate is really designed to capture what the actual costs are, and then that's the rate we use for anyone using a bed in our jail?
Correct.
All right. Anyone for public comment on this item? All right. Turn it to the Commission. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Thunder?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. That takes us to Item 12, which is a discussion to consider and provide guidance to Carrie Dever on the 2024 elected department head salaries. Good morning.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. As you may recall, every year at this time, we talk about elected official salaries for the upcoming year. As part of that conversation, I provided you with a couple of documents two weeks ago. One provided a summary of comparable entity salaries. And every year, I like to stress that that is 2023 data, so those entities haven't made adjustments for 2024. And also that those wages can vary quite a bit depending on who's in office, how long they've been in office. The other document I provided was a summary of department heads. Again, just to stress that for the department heads, I gave you a 2024 salary so you could get a good point of comparison when considering what you want to do for your elected officials. And then I also gave you that data for their chief deputies. So I'm really looking for two things for me today, if possible, guidance on whether or not for next year's resolution, if you want to change the base salaries that we list for those positions, and then also what type of adjustment you would like to do for each elected department head.
All right. Thank you. I know you had an opportunity to present last meeting, which is a couple of weeks ago. Commission said an opportunity to consider it. I don't know, does anybody have any questions for Carrie before I go to public comment? All right. Commissioner, anybody? Okay. We'll go to public comment, and then we can turn it over to the Commission for conversation. Thank you. Is there anyone here for public comment on this item today?
Gary Meyer, Minnehaha County. At the two weeks, two weeks ago, I'd actually like to hear your comments before public comment. But since that doesn't work that way, I would like to hear in your comments regarding last two, two weeks ago, the meeting that we had, there were a few people that made concerns about the salary for the auditor, the current auditor, in comparison to the salary to the previous auditor. The previous auditor was appointed by this committee, the current auditor was elected by the people, and there is a huge salary difference. And so I would like an explanation as to why that big difference.
Okay, thank you.
So you can't comment? Isn't this an open discussion?
No, this is public comment right now. Thank you, Gary. You know how this works. Anyone else for public comment this morning? Good morning.
Hi, my name's Alan Wheat, and I want to thank you guys for saving the county a lot of money because of the auditor. You really reduced her salary compared to Ben Kite's, and we're saving a lot of money. Thank you.
Morning. Good morning. My name is Rian Olem. I also am here wondering why, I did a little research, and wondering why there is such a discrepancy between the auditor prior to Leah. I have firsthand experience, 2022 was the first time that I volunteered to count ballots, and I was down here counting absentee ballots. Had never done it before, was sending emails to Mr. Kite. He couldn't answer my questions. He said I'd be trained day of. Came to day of, he couldn't even explain what was going on that morning. He had to have somebody else do the explaining for him. I don't know why there would be such a huge discrepancy. Again, I was wondering, is it because he was appointed that he was given a higher salary? Is it because Leah's a female? Is it a sexist thing? I think it looks pretty discriminatory, and I would highly suggest or would like to see Leah get paid the same, if not more. She's fighting for our freedom, for fair elections. That's very important to me. I consider my vote sacred, and I want somebody in there that's that's fighting for all the people. Doesn't matter what you're, what party you're affiliated with. Everybody's vote should count, and everybody should feel confident that their vote is being counted properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Jessica Paloma. I just wanted to reiterate, since Leah isn't here today because she's on vacation, she was here two weeks ago before you. And I know, Jean, you had said to her last year that if you want a raise, you can come before us and ask for one. So she did that, did what you requested, and she requested a 14% increase for last year plus a 5%. So that's what the auditor requested, and I would hope that you would pull that out aside of the percentage increase for everyone else across the board this year and discuss that individually because she came before you and asked for that. So I think that warrants individual discussion in front of all the constituents that are here on that issue today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this morning? Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to the Commission. Any thoughts or comments this morning? Mr. Kiple?
Well, I can start out with some general thoughts responsive to Carrie Dever. I know what you're looking for. I think next week, we have to take the action on, we've got a draft resolution that you've got templated out. And I know, I think, a lot of our discussions have been to stay consistent with other department heads and other salaries. I know we saw some inflationary pressure, pressure in the last year. So I guess I'd look to my colleagues that I think we had budgeted a 5% increase, but we also looking at equity for the step in, maybe if you can help us explain that, you'll you'll put better words together than I. But I think we had kind of compounded those two together, if the math is right, to a seven and a half percent was one of the rate changes we were considering.
That's correct. And I think the reason for that was in recognition that your appointed department heads are eligible for the matrix adjustment, which is 5% for 2024. Most of your department heads still have eligibility for the two and a half percent step, not all. But if they are eligible for the two and a half, in recognition that their staff are eligible for the two and a half, I think that's where the seven and a half is coming into into play.
Okay. Thank you. And Madam Chair, I guess this, I would say this analysis is a little bit different than our non-elected department heads and other staff and employees. I think we have, it's a little bit more of a political question with elected department heads. So our oversight is somewhat limited, I guess, as kind of the civics lesson, elected department heads are elected in their own right. We have, as I think the five of us have somewhat limited control over what their day-to-day operations are. They can make certain decisions on hiring and firing their own staff in their department. Basically, we set their budget, so their total number of FTEs, and then we set their salaries. So that, this is kind of our opportunity on an annual basis to review that. I don't know if a performance appraisal is the is the right word, but historically, this has been, you know, we've, we've increased all the elected heads. I think we've had a good history in Minnehaha County of professional staff and elected heads. I think as this has gotten some public attention, the auditor's case may be warranting further attention and discussion. Currently, I think we, we have an auditor that's come in, and I think even before she started, the salary was a big item on her agenda. I'd kind of ventured to say that the only thing coming from that elected office more frequently than, you know, election conspiracy-related items is her own salary. So those are kind of her two top agenda items. And again, back to my basic civics lessons, that's, that's what the people chose in that election. I was also elected, the five of us were elected, so we have equal standing to make some judgments on that. And I'm pretty confident that the people will make a different choice in the near future. So I'll leave that aspect to the people, but I have the authority here with, for my colleagues to consider some different options for her salary. So a couple of key points, when I look at her performance in less than a year in the office, just a couple of things that have been very disappointing to me, very alarming. Most recently was the auditor's office held a meeting with the, our election vendor, our software company, trying to get training, trying to get the proper information to run upcoming elections in April, June, and November. That seems like it would be a step in the right direction. Let's work with the entity that we're working, working with. Unbeknownst to that company, she had a group of other people on the call, was very unprofessional. I would just note to all the other department heads, if that's how you want to run a meeting, that won't looked, be looked upon very favorably by this Commission. That's was very unprofessional and not the way we do business, and quite embarrassing to the county. So I hold that as strike one. Strike two, heard from quite a few city colleagues, counterparts at, at the city of Sioux Falls, and they have some grave concerns about the upcoming election in April. And if this auditor's office is competent and up to the task, are they going to use the ballot counting machines that have been contracted to be used? I think those are all valid concerns and basically decreases trust in our institutions and our elections. So the irony of coming in and thinking you're going to kind of raise trust in elections by burning the institution down from within, just kind of shows that it's, it's a spasm of kind of a populism of the moment rather than a vetted case for how to run a professional office. So with a couple of strikes against her and that office, I've just got some, some concerns. Could probably go on with some other comments, but I think I kind of want to keep this tight and on point to this. So with that, I guess I would, my request to Carrie would be if you could have a couple options prepared for us for next week. And of course, I'll defer to my colleagues, and we would have to vote on this next week. But I'd like one version of this resolution ready to go that has an across-the-board, all elected officials, the 7.5% increase that we have talked about. And I'd like another version of this resolution ready to go that has a 7.5% increase for all elected officials except the auditor to be frozen at 0%. So those are the options I would like to consider next week, and I'd be happy to hear from any of my colleagues.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments this morning?
Well, I, excuse me, agree with some of the comments that have been made by Mr. Kiple. I believe that we've had feedback that's been pretty negative from a number of people. I think comparing the current auditor's experience with the former auditor's experience is not even close to being the same. You're talking about an individual who is running a multi-billion dollar company with thousands of employees, with government experience, with bonding experience, with accounting significance. That's not comparable to what the current auditor has. So if you're involved in HR-related issues, which all of us have to be, I think that's one of the accountabilities that we need to consider. Do I think there needs to be an adjustment? Yes, but I'm not convinced yet at this point that what's been discussed is the right answer.
All right. Anything else? Commissioner Blainberg?
Thank you. I would like to also, if I could, request that you draft a resolution for us at the 5% for all the department heads, just for comparison.
Okay. We're coming up with a lot of different options here, which, you know, I know Carrie was hoping to have a little clearer guidance, but we can come back with three options for next week. You know, I would, I would say that as far as elected officials, part of this resolution is to establish the salaries for new elected officials. We haven't talked about that yet. That is the rubric that the last few elected officials have come in at. It's published well in advance, so anybody who runs for office should know what their salary will be if they're a newly elected official, and we've been consistent in applying that. At this point, I'm not in favor of increasing that for next year. We are going to do a full-blown salary study next year, and so I think we'll have a lot better data, at least we hope to have a lot better data for, for throughout the organization and including elected officials. So my preference would be to keep that as is for right now. Does anybody have different thoughts on that? Okay. Is that, you have guidance?
I do. I'll come back next week with three resolutions, all reflecting no increase to base salaries. And then one with seven and a half across the board, one with seven and a half across the board except for the auditor would be at zero, and then the third with 5% across the board.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie.
Okay. So that takes us to the next item, Item 13. Consider a Motion to Approve an Update to the Policies and Procedures Manual on Position Authorizations. Carrie?
This is also a topic from a couple of weeks ago. We were seeking your approval to allow additional flexibility in over hires for the state's attorney's office and for the public defenders, and then also juvenile detention center. I believe you had some comments two weeks ago. Jamie Gravitt is here from the JDC if you have any questions for him. But basically, we're asking for your formal approval to allow this flexibility to our position authorizations.
All right. Any questions for Carrie? We did have an opportunity to talk about this before. Any public comment on this item? All right. Seeing none. Turn it over to the Commission for questions, discussion, emotion?
I would make a motion to approve the updates.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Thunder?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. It takes us to Item 14, which is to consider a motion to approve an update to the Minnehaha County Safety Manual. Carrie?
Also from two weeks ago, we discussed a small change to our safety manual to include a section on communicable diseases. We're asking for your formal approval tonight.
Thank you. Anyone for public comment on this item? All right. Any questions for the Commission? Or a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second?
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kiple?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Thunder?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That takes us to Item 15, and Steve gets to stand up here for quite a while, I think. So we'll start with 15, which is to authorize the Highway Department to purchase two RPM tech loader-mounted snow blowers.
Good morning, Commissioner. Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. Earlier this year, during the budget process, we asked and the Commission granted the ability to replace some of our older equipment due to our currently healthy highway fund. Two of the items were new loader-mounted snow blowers. We have those for our 24 budget for next year. We were talking with the vendor up in Renner, and he actually has one in stock and the other one is coming in. So in order to get our name on it, he said the sooner we could get a purchase order filed, the earlier, it would increase our odds that we'd be able to get our units right away after the first of the year. So we're asking for your permission to go ahead and get the purchase started. We wouldn't expend the funds until next year, and I did run this by Susan Beaman in the auditor's office.
So you can't promise that there won't be any snow all of 2024?
I hope we don't have to use these this year, but you just never know. After last year, we know how valuable these pieces of equipment are. The snowgo that's listed there has already been surplus that was broken all winter last year, which kind of put us... which kind of put us behind the eight ball at times. But by January 1st last year, it was next to impossible to find one of these snow blowers anywhere in the upper Midwest. And if you did, you were going to pay a premium for it. So I'm glad the winter so far has been mild. We haven't needed it, and the demand isn't real high.
All right. Any questions for Steve? Public comment? Any public comment on this item? All right, turn it over to the commission for discussion or a motion.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 16, which is to consider a motion to award, Rafe, I think you told me that's how I pronounce that, improvement funding to Dell Rapids, Hartford, Mapleton, Red Rock, and Edison Townships.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent, and actually Jacob Mars, our Assistant Highway Superintendent, has been very instrumental in the success our townships have had in requesting and being granted this funding. So I would like, appreciate that he would offer this request this morning.
All right, Jacob, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jacob Mars, Highway Department. We had a successful application process this year. Last year, we only awarded two, three townships based on the funding that we had and everyone who submitted their applications on time. This year, we have five. Currently, we have in the piggy bank $870,217.43 available to award to eligible townships and projects. In order to qualify for this, there's an application due in August for a five-year plan and then October for 2024, the following year's work. So all of these applicants met those requirements. Their total request is for $489,871, which leaves some remainder for next year. Next year will be the final year for additional funding from the state. After that, it is, it is no longer funded by the state. So I know there are some, some people working in peer to try to continue to fund this process. As was found through the inspection process, there are a lot of poor-conditioned structures out there on township roads, and this project has helped those townships replace poor-conditioned structures at a minimum cost. So hopefully, there's support in peer for this moving forward. But our request would be to award these, award these applications to the respective townships.
Thank you. Questions for Jacob? Public comment on this item?
Madam Chair, I just had one clarifying question. So Jacob, on these, the townships have some skin in the game too with some match. And then to be qualified, don't they have to levy a certain portion as well? So we know that they can, they can pay their fair share? They've got the tax base to do that? Because what was, that was part of the hang-up, was some of these townships didn't have that tax in place last year, and now they do, so they're more eligible or engaged in the program. Can you just clarify that?
Yep, so they have to have a levy for secondary roads, or they have to have an opt-out for, for their roadways. In addition to that, they have to also submit their, their annual financial report so that we can check to make sure that they're going to be able to cover the minimum 20% match for these projects.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Blainberg?
I just wanted to say thanks for all the effort that you've put in to help the townships take advantage of this. I think it's a great help. And can you just remind us, when is the deadline for the next funding cycle?
That would be the beginning of August.
Okay, thank you.
They're required to submit a five-year plan by then.
Anyone else? I believe I already asked for public comment, so I'd entertain a motion.
Make a, I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 17, which is to authorize the chair to sign a resolution authorizing submission of the big preservation and replacement funds and cost participate 20% for three bridges. Steve?
Good morning. Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. January 2nd is our deadline to submit bridge improvement grant applications for preservation and replacement projects. This year, the highway department is requesting the ability to apply for three bridge replacements at an 80/20 funding opportunity where the state would pick up 80% of the cost. We have about $3.6 million worth of bridge work here that we're submitting, of which only about $700,000 would be the responsibility of Minnehaha County. The rest would be state-funded if we're successful. The preservation scores are all 50 points or higher. Historically, that's been a good, successful number, but we just don't know what's going to happen in February or March when the state reviews these and reviews the scores. But we're pretty confident that we'll get some funding out of this. So we're looking for your permission to apply for these three grants.
All right. Any public comment on this item? Turn it to the commission for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chair, one pointed discussion. I think we'll be fairly competitive for these. I think we've got some good projects and, and we've scored well in the past. I'll also note, we are competing with our sister counties, and this gets back to some of the legislature's tasks this coming year with county funding mechanisms. But I know there's some sister counties that don't apply for these because they can't afford the, a 20% match. So we're, in the current system, we're, we're sitting in, in pretty good shape here in Minnehaha County, and we're competitive for these, but some of these, it's frankly, because some of our competitors are in a really, really bad shape financially. But, so that's just kind of an aside, but I think we have, under this current system, we have a duty to put forward our best projects, and Steve, if you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, and some other counties have been awarded funds, and then they bid the projects out. Lincoln County had one where the prices came in really high and were unable to complete the project, so they actually ended up turning their funds back because they didn't, the pricing came in much higher than anticipated.
Commissioner Bennega?
If they return the, excuse me, the funding back, what happens with that? Does it get pushed into the next year of funding cycle?
It's just part of the funds that are available for future years. You have four years to expend your funds once it's awarded.
Thank you.
And I would just say the, kind of the flip side to some of those comments is that we can be very thankful to have a really well-led, experienced staff at the highway department, and you guys do a great job of being very proactive and looking ahead and getting bridges set up so that they do qualify for this program, and I really thank you for that. I mean, for our taxpayers, it's a heck of a deal, so.
Thank you very much. Yes, we do have a really good staff that works with me on these, and I appreciate everything that they do for us.
All right.
I'll move approval for these big grant submissions.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bennega?
Yes.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. It takes us to item 18, which is to authorize the chair to sign the South Dakota DOT utility and right-of-way certificates for projects MC 2012, Structure 50087-120, MC 20-13, Structure 50-237-120, replacement, and MC 23-06, Structure 50-180-134, replacement, which I believe corresponds to the previous item we just discussed.
You are correct. Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This is some of the required paperwork for the application that you just approved. And basically, what all three of these do is provide assurance to the South Dakota DOT that Minnehaha County will take responsibility for all necessary right-of-way or easement that's needed for these projects. This is a standard request for big-funded projects.
All right, any public comment on this item? I'll turn it over to the commission. Questions, comments, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item 19. Consider bid results and award recommendation for MC 22-07, Structure 50-337-130, replacement, and authorize the chair to sign an agreement with 605 Companies pending South Dakota DOT concurrence.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This is another big project success. A year ago, we had this project out for bid with 100% county funding. The current, the bidding environment at the time, pricing was coming in very high, and we were concerned that this was going to be in that $700,000 range. We had about $300,000 budgeted for the project, so we made the decision to pull the project. We never opened bids, and last January 2nd, we submitted a 60/40 funding request to the DOT for big funding, and we were successful. So we're receiving 60% funding. In addition, I asked the DOT if we could do a bid alternate for a pre-cast box culvert instead of cast-in-place box culvert. They've agreed to allow that on this project, which also helped increase the number of bidders that would be available to do this work. And we're very happy with the results of the bids. 605 Companies would do this project for $360,061.25, and it's a pre-cast structure. The state DOT will pay 60% of this, will be responsible for 40%. So we're back under the original budget number we had for this project.
Difference a year can make?
Yes.
All right. Anyone for public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, turn it over to the commission.
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the agreement with the 605 Companies pending the DOT's concurrence.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to your last item, item 20. Authorize the chair to sign the SD DOT right-of-way donation forms for projects MC 21-03, Structure 50-290-131, replacement, and MC 21-04, Structure 50-208-130, replacement.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent, and these are a little different. These were actually local federal replacement projects that we applied for, and we were awarded funding two years ago. We've been waiting for these projects to be bid. We've heard indications from the South Dakota DOT who will administer these projects, that they're getting ready to bid and award these projects. One of the required pieces of paperwork for these projects is what they call a right-of-way donation form. It's a little different than what normally happens on our bridge projects, but this is, the adjacent property owners are giving us the necessary property easements so that the work can be completed, and this is strictly a requirement of the Federal Highway Administration. We're looking for your approval to authorize these right-of-way donations.
All right. Any public comment on this item? Any questions by the commission? Discussion? Motion?
I'll move approval.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That takes us to opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here today who'd like to speak about something that was not on our agenda, something that was not on our agenda already today. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Cindy Meyer, Minnehaha County. So myself and others have stood in front of you for months now, asking for an agenda item so we can discuss our election questions. But because you will not honor our request, here I stand again during public comment time. I would challenge you to pick any auditor, any election clerk, or anyone from the Secretary of State's office, and ask them to explain just how the software inside the voting machine works. They won't know. And when they won't know, that means someone else is in control of our elections. We've been calling out ESNS for months as having manipulated our voting results. This is really a secondary issue. The real issue is secret vote counting by secret software. Because the election results can be manipulated, because we, the people, to whom those election results belong, aren't allowed to verify them. Government is chosen by consent of we, the people. We must know that our consent is real. Secret vote counts by government using secret software creates a conflict of interest situation that we can't afford without great cost to our lives, liberty, and happiness. The temptation is too strong. Election results determine who gets to exercise the people's designated power and spend their hard-earned money. Subverted elections place the people's power and hard-earned money into corrupt, self-serving, special-interest hands where the people's basic rights are violated. Elections are about we, the people, choosing a servant government that is tasked, above all else, with protecting our God-given inherent, inherent and inalienable rights against all enemies of those rights, foreign and domestic. Only a corrupt, self-serving government pursues secret vote counts. There is no reason for secret vote counts other than to manipulate results, and manipulating results is a very serious crime. Manipulated election results by rogue government servants constitutes treason. It constitutes the overthrowing of the true sovereigns of our constitutional republic of we, the people. Moreover, simple failure, the simple failure by government to exercise due diligence and secure open, honest, transparent, and verifiable results on behalf of we, the people from private, secret voting companies also constitutes treason. It's treason by proxy. Again, there is only one reason for conducting secret vote counts. Election results are being manipulated. There is no reason for secret vote counts. The people ultimately responsible for this treason are wayward government officials who have violated their oath and empowered the use of secret vote counts. Those in governments who stood down and said nothing about the use of secret vote counts includes everyone from local officials all the way up to the governor. In other words, everyone involved in the administration of our elections, who is responsible for securing and certifying those results, as well as everyone who serves in any kind of check-and-balance capacity by virtue of his or her oath, is guilty. Soon, the people will rise up and take our elections back by force. Our history demands it, and our national survival demands it. Election manipulation is an existential threat to the entire American experiment in self-government and liberty. When all else fails, we go back to the beginning. Whenever any form of government becomes destructive to our rights, it is the rights of the people to alter or to abolish and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. This is written in the Declaration of Independence.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Jessica Paulama. I just wanted to talk again about the elections, and I wanted all of you commissioners up here to know that all of your election equipment that is supposed to be secured in this building, the chain of custody of all of this equipment has been broken. So your express vote machines being kept in the mailroom with unlimited access to that room, okay, is violating the chain of custody. Without having a log of every person that's been in and out of that room and what they were doing in there, and all the locations in the building where this equipment is stored, violated the chain of custody. So what the auditor is asking is that these machines all have an end-to-end audit because prior to her taking this post, okay, this was not secure. So how do you run an election, a secure election, on machines with a broken chain of custody? Kipley, are you listening to me? Do you hear that?
Please be respectful. Thank you.
Likewise, ma'am. So the chain of custody has been broken. Also, while asking for the proper training to run the elections that the prior auditors and all the administrations before have been running completely blind, they have the software, we pay $8,500 bucks a year for it, and nobody knows how to use it. And in the affidavit from, the transcript from ESNS with their executives saying, "We do not train the auditors or the election staff or the SOS staff on the audit trail, the audit logs and the cast vote records." So we're not trained. Okay, so we have that, and that computer has been with IT that produces all of this information that would prove it's secure. So when asking for this training, ESNS shut it down because they have too many questions. They wanted to come do their little superficial training and get out of here when they knew they were going to have legit questions on how to produce this audit trail that ESNS is intentionally trying to hide from us. Do you understand this, commissioners? What's happening here? Please listen to me. You work for me. You work for all of these people. Please listen to me. You work for me. You work for all of these people.
I believe you live in Lincoln County.
You do?
I believe you do.
You do? Oh, okay. We'll have to update you on my current location. Anyway, so last night we went to a pipeline meeting in, in Canton. There was over twenty, two hundred and twenty-five people there. And part of that discussion was the county commissions. How the county commissions are not representative of the people in these counties. They were saying over ninety percent of the people in the counties don't want these pipelines in the entire state. Yet, the commissions, the representative of these ninety percent of people that don't want the pipelines are the ones that will not defend them. There was a recent article, Beth Warden, just wrote an article, it said that Lake County Commission will not let these landowners have an agenda item. Why? Because they're not representing the people. And that's been happening in this county for two years. You will not let these people have an agenda item to discuss the elections. And our founding fathers said that our sacred right to vote is the right that secures all of the rights. Property rights, health freedom rights, every right that we have secured by our right to elect a representative republic. So two years of not letting us on the agenda. Are you a representative government? I would say these people in here don't think so and I sure don't think so. So with no transparency here in this county with the election records and your state's attorney's office sending denial letters on behalf of the auditor who does not believe that this is not a public record. She believes it's a public record because she knows the truth about what we're asking for. She's done her research. She knows exactly what these election records are and they're public record. And the state's attorney's office is saying, sorry, this is the way it works. We're gonna issue a letter on your letterhead, deny these records anyway. What is that? That's tyranny. So you're in Sanford, correct? So how about I go to, to the doctor and I have an MRI and they say you have a massive tumor on your gallbladder and we need to remove your gallbladder. Do you think I would let them do that without seeing the x-ray myself? Anybody else in finance? Okay, do you get a bank statement with absolutely no transactions on it? If you got a blank bank statement, how long would you be doing business with these people? That's what our auditor wants.
Thank you, Paloma, your time is up.
And that's what we want. And now I am a Minnehaha County resident and you do work for me.
Your time is up, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jennifer Foss, Minnehaha County. I came to the last commission meeting not knowing all the details on line item number fifteen and I'm not here to discuss these. I did a deep dive on some of these in the last four years as it pertains to this time's meeting number twelve. I know I'm not allowed to talk about that, but I would like to make a couple of comments.
You cannot make any comments on item fifteen, ma'am.
I'm, I'm going to make a comment in general, not about the line, not about the line item, just a general question, just a general statement. I had to see some discrepancies, but I watched you give a seven percent increase, you give a five percent and you percent.
You need to sit down, please.
But I heard Mr. Kipli give a complete biased comment at every time I've been here.
You need to sit down. You're not allowed to talk about something that was on the agenda.
Well, I just wanna say that as an elected res-
You're not allowed to talk about that, please.
As an elected official.
Please sit down.
I would like to see the bias stop, Mr. Kipli.
Gary Meyer, Minnehaha County. You told me once I tried your patience. I would say the same. You also try our patience. I find the way you run this meeting totally disrespectful, with the exception of Commissioner Blainberg. The rest of you sit up there and you look at us like we're the peasants out here. You treat us citizens like lower-class citizens and for Commissioner Kipli to say that Auditor Leah came in with conspiracy-related ideas is just inexcusable. I've seen it time and time again. You don't seem to represent your constituents. I've seen it with the pipeline. You have a room packed full of people that have concerns about the pipeline and what, what happens? Commissioner Kipli makes three amendments to weaken the ordinance in favor of the pipeline, the very few people in this room. I too is it, have been at several pipeline meetings. And the, two, two weeks ago, a person got up and thanked the counties for passing ordinances because it helped the PUC make their decision. And they mentioned Spink, Brown and McPherson Counties. One of those counties even got sued by the pipeline, but they stood their ground. They had a backbone and they, they won. And then they mentioned, oh, I guess Minnehaha, well, they passed an ordinance too, albeit weak.
Thank you. Anyone else this morning? Good morning.
Linda Montgomery from Fairview, South Dakota. I am a Lincoln County resident. But one thing I have done here in Minnehaha is follow your auditor. I was here when she was sworn in and took her oath to us. And she told us after that oath, I thought was very telling, she said, if I am not following this oath that I just took, you need to call me out. Now, I happened to be at that meeting of ESNS who had nine, nine people there, vice presidents, heads of offices, nine of them. And the Secretary of State had six people there. They never talked except to introduce themselves. None of you were there. State's attorney wasn't there. None of you were there to go, gee, you know, I've seen her doing her work. She's doing her job. She's getting her precincts straightened around and I follow that closely because I am a precinct person. And I follow my boundaries. She has, she and her staff have worked very hard. Now, I would suggest that if she doesn't qualify for you to respect, then how can the people respect you?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. Good morning again. Rian Ullam. Just a couple of statements. And again, I am very concerned about our elections. And when an auditor hasn't been allowed to be trained on election software and the machines, how can I be confident in an election? It's really serious to all of us. It, to me, it doesn't even come down to the money. Our elections are a serious matter and Cindy said it beautifully. I'm not confident. And how can I have confidence in a commission that isn't supporting an official that's been elected by we, the people?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Donna Karas, Minnehaha County. I would just like to remind all of you that even though you may hear a few negative comments about Leah, she won by a large majority, so most of us agree with her, not you. And the arrogance is just appalling here. I just, we elected Leah by a big majority. We agree with what she's doing. So your few negative comments you hear should just be taken and gotten, gotten rid of. We wanted her. The majority voted her in. You can't continue to disrespect her. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to Commissioner Liaison Reports. Are there any Commissioner Liaison Reports this morning? Okay, any non-action commission discussion? Commissioner Blainberg.
Thank you. This week I was able, this past week I was able to attend Leaders of Tomorrow Justice Impacted graduation and I just wanted to mention what a great organization that is and that I know we work with them. We send a lot of referrals their way and the, the resident didn't want any, they wanted to remain anonymous, but one of our Safe Home residents was able to graduate this past week. So I thought that was a really great accomplishment.
Yeah, that is a great accomplishment. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so we do have executive session immediately following the commission meeting for purposes of SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two, one, three, four and six. So I'd entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
So move.
Second. Motion in a second. We will now go into executive session in the training room next door. The commissioners will begin executive session at, let's try for ten oh five. All right, thank you.